The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers, or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
The council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Council member Hunt. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
And Council liaison Gilbertson.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of February 19th, 2019. The first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation of certificate to newly appointed board and commission members, and I would like to ask Councilmember Bill Patena, the Chair of the Council Subcommittee for Boards and Commissions, to join me on the chamber floor.
Hello? Hey. So you get me back again after two-year hiatus. I want to thank Councilmember Finn for taking over the chairmanship of this committee for the last two years, and now I'm back. So I'd like to make sure that everyone understands that we have over 100 people now that volunteer on our boards and commissions, and we have over 20 boards and commissions. If any of you are not involved and want to be, contact our city clerk and she'll get you an application. But I want to thank all of the people who are currently members of our boards and commissions. We couldn't run the city the way we run it without your help, so we appreciate your gift of time, and thank you very much. So tonight, we are welcoming to the Personnel Board Mr. Stephen Atchison.
All right. The next item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine or have been previously reviewed by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. I would like to make a note that tonight's Consent Agenda does require a public hearing, so if there's any member of the public present who wants to address a public hearing on the Consent Agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. Is there any member of the public who would like to address an item on the Consent Agenda that is a public hearing? All right, seeing none, and I have no speaker request forms. Council, is there any items that you would like to have removed from Consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote. And the Consent Agenda passes unanimously. We'll now move on to New Business, and this is Item 20R. It is a Public Hearing Development Impact Fees, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Mr. Jeff Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. And Katie Gregory, our Deputy City Manager, will provide the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to hold the public hearing on the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plans associated with our update to our development impact fees. And with me tonight, I have Andrew Reames. He's with our Ref Telus Financial Consultants. He is the one who has been preparing for us the utility study, and Duncan Associates is doing the non-utility study. So as far as water, wastewater and water resource fees, Andrew's been preparing that report for us and working with us on that. Tonight's public hearing is just that. It's an opportunity for you to hear if there's any public comment related to the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan. We also hold stakeholder meetings, as we've discussed before, and so we hear through the stakeholder meetings what some of the public comments are, and issues and concerns that those who are interested in our impact fees share with us. So I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about just kind of the process, kind of the main things that this hearing is to cover. There are two portions to impact fees. One is adopting a land use and infrastructure improvement plan, land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. You do one adoption for that. Later in the year, I'll be coming back with the actual fees and the fee ordinance that are associated with that. So it's a two-part process, and I'll kind of go through that real quick. As far as legal requirements are concerned for the public hearing, we released a draft to the public back in December 20th, and we're required by the statute to allow 60 days for our stakeholders to review that draft before we hold a public hearing. We're going to hold the public hearing tonight. We have to do that at least 30 days prior to when we adopt the infrastructure improvement plan and the land use assumptions. So that's where we are this evening, and we're proposing that on April 2nd, we'll come back to you for the actual adoption. I showed you this last time, so I won't spend too much time, but really what I want you to focus on this evening is our comments related to our growth projections and land use, which are basically our, who's going to show up and when, right, in the city? And who are they going to be? Are they going to be residential? Is it going to be commercial? And I'll show you a little bit about that. What are some of the capital needs that we have that are related to growth in the city? And also, how are we looking at service areas in our city? And what are some of the policy decisions that we've made around service areas, and how we're going to segregate different portions of the city in terms of the development that's required in those areas and the fees that would be charged in those areas? Like I mentioned before, we have lots of stakeholder groups that are involved. We have many real estate developers that are involved in our stakeholder groups. Our Home Builders Association is representing a lot of the home builders that are building in our area, as well as many of those home builders are attending our meetings. Arizona State Land, and then also the multifamily groups. The Association for Multifamily is also there as well. We talk about a lot of things. We've talked about our growth projections, both residential and commercial. We've talked about our infrastructure plans and shared those with them. We get a lot of feedback. Certainly, if something is missing from our infrastructure plans, we hear about it, but also any other comments regarding what's required for growth as we go forward. Our service areas, we discuss our fee methodology, and that's their opportunity to identify concerns and maybe have a little robust discussion about it in our stakeholder meetings, necessary. So let me just really quickly jump into our growth projections, maybe? There it is. So when we look at the residential side, I showed you this last time. These are kind of our new dwelling units, kind of broken up among the various service areas that we have in the city. You can see a lot of our growth is focused on the northern Peoria. Obviously, that's where we have the majority of our vacant land and our new development coming in. And then here's our non-residential. This is in millions of square feet, so you can see that in the southern portion of the city, we are showing roughly 3 million square feet of new commercial development coming in in the next 10 years. In the northern portion of the city, about 2 million square feet coming in the next 10 years. I think we need batteries. Go ahead and forward that for me. As far as service areas are concerned, I just kind of put them all on one here. The only real change we're making to our service area and our non-utility impact fees is in the area of parks, where we're proposing to just move that northern boundary for our Zone 1 parks up to Happy Valley Road. So we're doing that in order to kind of more clearly define, based upon where the growth is occurring and what some of the projects are in those areas. So we've made that adjustment, but the transportation and public safety zones are staying the same. And there's, whoops, there's some, as far as, sorry, excuse me, as far as the infrastructure improvement plan is concerned, you can see some of the dollars associated with that that we have listed in our IIP. There we go. And on our water, if you could click one more time, our water service area, our wastewater service area, and I apologize because these are all coming in one at a time, but go ahead and click a few times. The water service area, the only change we're making in our water services is we're bifurcating the northern water service area into two areas, east of the Agua Fria and west of the Agua Fria. That's the only service area change that we've made. Wastewater is staying the same, as well as our water resources fee. Go ahead. What I do want to just talk about before we finish up on the public hearing, or start the public hearing, is we've had a lot of stakeholder input, and we've met on several different occasions. One, these are the four areas that we've really identified as either input or concerns or things that we're continuing to work on with our stakeholders. The first one is on our water fees, which is considering a longer lookback period for our peak day demand. This is a little bit technical, so you don't have to worry about that, but that is of importance to them, and so we have taken another look at that. We've actually suggested some changes in the study to address some of the concerns that they had. Our transportation fees, we're going to consider looking at our level of service, looking more regionally maybe than citywide, and seeing what the impacts of that are. And there's a lot of differences in kind of the stakeholder input surrounding that, so that's still a discussion that we're going to have. Looking at our parks, validating kind of our cost per acre for our parks. As you know, it's not getting cheaper to buy land in areas where we are hoping to find places to put our neighborhood parks, so we're having some conversation about that. And of course, with our CFDs, which we're starting to have, you know, interest, we have two currently, and interest for some more CFDs in the city, we want to make sure that we're evaluating what our credit assumptions are going to be for those CFD areas to reflect in the case of, say, Vistancia, what have they already contributed to the system? And so make sure that the credits are appropriately aligned with that. So that's really all I have for the public hearing. That's where we are today, February 19th, is our public hearing. Again, this is just on the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan, and we'll be coming back to council in April for adoption.
Thank you. Council, comments, questions? Well, I would like to know, so this is the second time we have done impact fees this way, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So the first time wasn't 10 years ago, was it?
It wasn't 10 years ago, it was five years ago.
Five years ago.
Yes.
So that, there's the flexibility. That was really going to be my question. So how much flexibility do we have in changing these assumptions?
We do have some flexibility when we talk about the study and some of the inputs and the assumptions that go into the study. Certainly, we have some ability to make some adjustments there. The new statute went into effect, we met that, we have to update the fees every five years, or we have to officially say we're not going to change the fees, you know, but we do have to go through and update the fees every five years. And we should do that. As a growing city, it's important for us to make sure that we're reflecting the most updated growth needs that we have in the city, as well as growth assumptions in the city.
So how accurate were we in the first five years with our assumptions?
Good question. As far as EDUs, now, commercial's a different animal, because commercial comes in kind of, it has sort of a mind of its own, and we're unique in some ways with our commercial because, again, it's dependent upon our land use and what we have and, you know, who's ready to bring in commercial. But on the residential side, I believe we actually did quite well, and I can get you kind of a breakout of that, but I believe we actually did quite well in comparison to what we were projecting, which was roughly anywhere between 1,400 to 1,600 units of residential development. Now, what we don't always hit on the mark is where in the city those are all occurring, but generally, as an overall aggregate number, we're pretty close.
But where in the city is a pretty big deal when it comes to...
When it comes to impact fees, it can be a big deal when you have zones, like I showed you, and service areas where we are collecting from. So if one service area is doing more and another is doing less, again, that comes to cash flows, but it also comes to the question of, then, do you need the infrastructure at the same timing that you had originally thought you would? You may not need it, you know, right away, but, you know, with the way that we seem to be building, we tend to need it, and we tend to get the units in the places where we think we're going to see them.
Okay, so even though Peoria divides it into zones, and we come out close overall, if we didn't come out exactly close in each zone...
Right.
Does that mean those adjustments, okay, do I have to give the money back?
No, no, that's a good question, no. Partly not because of the way that we develop our impact fees, which is more on the standards-based approach, which I think I kind of mentioned at the last meeting. And that's because we're basically saying, if it grows in that area, we're going to need to build something. If it doesn't grow in that area, we don't need to build something. So it really is timed a bit, and that's mostly on the non-utility side, which are your streets and your parks and public safety facilities. On the water wastewater side, you know, we do tend to plan those projects well ahead of time, and you're building capacity usually ahead of the development that needs it. So you don't always have the luxury of saying, you know, we don't need to build as much capacity, because if you're going to build, you know, a Pyramid Peak Water Treatment Plant, you're going to build the max that you can build, rather, or you're going to build a lot, rather than doing in increments, so.
So for people who are watching at home and always wonder why things in a city take so long to be built, it's because we have to project our infrastructure in advance, and then we have to wait for the growth to come, you know, the private sector, and then we have to build it.
Yes.
So all of those things take quite a long time, and we have to be very judicious with taxpayer money. It's not our money to begin with.
Yeah.
So this is just one more reason why things take a long time. It's actually for a very good reason.
Yes.
All right, council, any other discussion? Okay, well, there is no council action required this evening. This is just a public hearing, and we thank you very much. All right. Mr. Tyne?
That's all we have for that item. Would you like us to go to item 21, or?
I think we have to hold the public hearing. Have we opened the public hearing? Okay.
Okay.
Just in case there's folks that want to comment on it.
Okay.
Yes.
So I will then, for this item, open a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this issue? If so, please come forward and fill out a public request, speaker request form, which you can find at the podium. And seeing none, I will close this public hearing. All right. No further discussion from the council? That is it? Thank you. All right. We will now move on. All right, the next item on the agenda is Call to the Public for Non-Agenda Items. I do not have any speaker request forms still, so we will now move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And just one item for the council tonight. As we are often reminded, our first responders are thrust into challenging situations every single day. What we don't often discuss enough is what happens after that? What are the next steps? Tonight, we wanted to recognize a couple of our employees. I'm going to ask that Chief Miller come up and provide just a quick introduction of a follow-up of the wellness of our citizens on an initial incident that occurred.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you're right, Mr. City Manager, our officers respond to many different types of calls, and it's more than just handling the call and leaving. In this case, on December 27th of last year, Officer Steve Cusamano and Renee Hoffman answered a call for, it was a welfare check, at a residence in our city. When they arrived there, they found an elderly woman who appeared to be not in the best shape. They noticed that she didn't have any food in the cupboard, and they went out on their own and purchased food for her. They returned with the food and gave it to her with the expectation that she would be able to provide for herself after she had the food. They came back a couple days later and found that she hadn't cooked anything, she hadn't eaten, so Officer Hoffman took it upon herself to cook for her, made her some meals, got her back up to a good, healthy position. And at that point, they had made several, after leaving, they made several other calls to the house on their own. Officer Steve Cusamano, on his own, went to the house to make sure that she was okay. And on one of their visits, Adult Protective Services was there, and they teamed up with our officers and Adult Protective Services and found a situation where they can place this lady in 24-hour care, and it's just a testament to the dedication of our officers. And again, they're kind of shy, as typically officers are, but our officers and first responders, we go above and beyond, and sometimes that's not noticed. And in this case, I think it deserved recognition. That's why they're here tonight. So if you don't mind, Renee and Steve, come on up. Pretty good. So at this time, if you have any comments or questions for the officers, they're here.
Council? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for what you do every day, but when we hear stories like that, we're reminded why it's so important to support what you all do. But thank you for being, doing what you did when no one was looking, and you didn't have to. It just speaks volumes to your character and your compassion, and we're just so grateful in having folks like you represent your city the way you have, but just being such great, compassionate people. Thank you so much.
We truly, truly appreciate you looking out for somebody who obviously had nobody else looking out for her. I mean, you saved her life, I am sure, and you make Peoria so proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That is all I have.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to reports from the city council. We'll start with Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, February 7th, I attended the Veterans Board meeting. It's one of the subcommittees we have, and we discussed the new John McCain Plaza, as well as the traveling Vietnam Wall, and what their role might be in both of those events. On Friday, February 8th, I played at the Chamber of Commerce $10 million shootout with Anthony Alejandro, Andy Granger, and John Sefton. I was one of 10 people who were chosen to shoot at $1 million. I'm still not a millionaire. On Tuesday, February 12th, there was a metal beam signing at the Peoria Community Center for the New Resource Center. When I first looked in the door, they showed me the door so I could see it, it looked really very, very small to me, and then Councilmember Edwards told me that was just the reception area. I didn't actually see the whole building, and then when I saw it, it really is a nice-sized building, and it's going to be, I'm sure it's going to be very, very successful. The one thing, I got there early, around a little bit after 8:00, and I noticed that the building was, the community center was already full. They had, people went and get their taxes done for free. They had a Zumba class going on, they had a class going on for elderly people that have diabetes. In addition to that, they had a Valentine's party where they had, everybody came dressed up, it was a full house there. They had food, they had music, and bingo. And my point in all of this is, they do amazing things there every day, and I would like to ask Mr. Tyne, I'd like to have just a short study session on what they all do, so that all of our staff can understand, as well as the citizens that watch this. They do quite an amazing thing, and I'd like to thank Paula Considine for all of her efforts over at the community center. On February 12th, I was elected the new Chair of the Board and Commission Subcommittee. Again, I want to thank Councilmember Finn for taking that leadership for two years. He did an amazing job, and I look forward to my next two years. On February 15th, Friday, February 15th, we had the Boards and Commission Appreciation Event at Arizona Broadway Theater. ABBA was the tribute group that played, was a great event, had an opportunity to meet a lot of people that sit on our boards and commissions, and I think they really appreciate the event that we have for them every year. On Saturday, February 16th, I attended, along with the mayor, the heart for the city, a Valentine affair. It's a big fundraising night for them. They had testimonials by some of the young adults that they mentor, and it was quite an interesting evening. And then on Sunday, February 17th, I had the opportunity to go to an organization, Swing for Teens Night, over at Top Golf. It's Bloom 365, and, you know, a lot of us, when we sit home at night and we read in the paper, watching television, we think, you know, boy, there's a situation going on in this country that we really need to deal with, or it really needs to be dealt with. Well, the lady that started Bloom 365, she did something about it. She saw a need to address domestic violence, and be able to go to kids who were 14, 15, and 16, and talk to them about domestic violence, and what they should avoid, and how they should act if they're on a date, and those types of things. Today, they've reached over 25,000 children. It was a really, really good event, and I'm looking forward to great things. And she did mention to me, Donna Bartosz mentioned to me, that she is going to get involved with our New Resource Center, and people will be able to go over to the community center where it's going to be, and be able to get that organization out of Phoenix and hopefully into Peoria. So looking forward to that, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of, I guess, public service announcements here. Ball Crash is coming to the Palo Verde District, so if you are in the Palo Verde District and you are watching this evening, it begins on March 7th in the Palo Verde District, starting at 67th and Cactus. Mom, I know you're watching, so yours is April 3rd, before you text me. We also have a Park Fest that is going to happen on February 23rd. That's from 8:00 to 11:00 at the Skunk Creek Trailhead, and that's at 15091 North 83rd Avenue. So my third public service announcement, I think, is fitting for this evening, since we did so much discussion about the amazing work that our police and fire do. This is something that drives me crazy. Every single day, when I see vehicles that stop wherever they happen to be traveling down the road, when they see an emergency vehicle coming, you're required to get to as far right as you possibly can. Stopping in the lane closest to the center lane really doesn't help them get to their destination quicker. So if you're watching at home, you do have a responsibility. You can look it up, it's ARS 28775. You need to move as far right as possible and let the vehicles get to their destination. Please don't stop wherever you happen to be traveling down the road. Give them room to get to where they need to go. That's all I have. Thanks. That's all I have. Thanks.
It is impressive that you know the statute.
At the top of my head.
Vice Mayor Ben Sparker.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for that public service announcement. I want to add on to the Bloom 365, and Councilmember Patena, thank you so much for going and representing, because they are doing some amazing work. I want to say that my daughter did go through those programs, and it has truly impacted the way she communicates with her peers and the expectations of respect that she has from her peers and what she gives. It's a proactive approach to building healthy relationships at a very young age, which will carry them through and be able to identify the signs of an unhealthy situation long before it gets out of control. So I highly recommend it, and they are doing some great work, and they're a Peoria organization that started right here in our backyard, so. Also, I was not able to attend the Boards and Commissions Dinner. I went to a Peoria North Rotary fundraiser. I know the rest of the council was there, and I heard it was great and that it was a great show, but, so I couldn't actually be there to show my appreciation, but I just want to say how grateful I am for all of the volunteers that give their time, talent, resources, energy to our different boards and commissions. Again, as was said, stated before by Councilmember Patena, we can't do the job we do in running the city as effectively as we do without those volunteers, so thank you so much for that. On February 9th, I attended the Neighborhood Pride event in the Acacia District, and I went with my family, and my church was there, and it was a Peoria event, so it was great to bring, see it all come together. But I just want to say how grateful I am to staff for all the work that they do to coordinate all of that. And just to name a few, Eric Strunk, Jack Stroud were out there painting fences, and I got there, like, I don't know, it was right a little after 7:00, and Councilman Edwards was already out there shoveling gravel. I have a great picture of that, by the way. And so it just, it feels really good to, you know, come together as a community and do some great work for some people that need a little hand up. We, on February 12th, attended a, we had a Trilogy Bike Club meeting. It's their regular meeting, but a very engaged group. We're always talking about, you know, how we can improve roads and bike lanes and things like that. And like I said, a very engaged group, and just had a really healthy discussion and had staff there. Adina Lund, Brandon Fori was there, and it is so clear that there's an ongoing dialogue going on with that group. They're building a great relationship and communicating and working together, and it was just a really good experience and just how a public meeting should go, and the feedback that I got was really, really positive. So thank you for that. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, mayor. As the vice mayor said, I was out helping out at Neighborhood Pride. I spent quite a bit of time shoveling and actually painting. I got my clothes all full of paint. I'm obviously not a good painter, but I just want to thank staff for putting that together and just watching the staff come together, watching their residents come out and help pitch out, or pitch in as well, was just really neat to watch. I think we ended up doing about 17 or 18 homes or transforms, so it was really neat to see the outcome at the end of that day. So thank you, everybody that came out and participated. As Councilman Patena mentioned, I did go to the metal beam signing over at the community center, and I just, I want to give a special shout-out to Chris over at Core Construction and his amazing efforts to connect the youth that were at the rec center. They've been displaced. The room that they normally meet in is under construction, and so they've really, for the last several weeks, have been just not able to use their facility. So they really don't have a meeting place, even though they're, you know, they're meeting out in the lobby and trying their best to adapt to the change. But all during this process, I watched him talk to these kids, have lunch with them. He said he's having lunch with them almost on a daily basis. He set up a camera inside the construction zone so that they can see exactly what's going on to their new facility. So it was just, again, Chris over at Core Construction, thank you for just taking that extra time to really show those kids what you're doing to improve their lives. I just want to mention that. This last Saturday, I was able to go out to do a dedication at Habitat for Humanity for the Barazza family. Just want to welcome them to the city of Peoria, and it's great to have you in our city. And then Sunday, what a fun, I went to a event put on by PetSmart, the Peoria Police Department, fixadoptandsave.com, and also PetSmart. They did a free dog and cat vaccination, along with microchip services. They ended up servicing 210 animals that came through the facility. People started lining up at 5:00 in the morning, even though the event didn't start till 11:00. And so they ended up staying extra, they had extra vaccinations, and so they, again, they were planning on 100 pets, they ended up doing 210. And after that, they also passed out 150 vouchers for free spay and neutering for pets. And so I just want to thank all those organizations. And Chief, I want to thank you and your team for helping out. What a phenomenal, everybody that I talked to, all the residents, were so thankful for, it was organized, it was well-conceived, the officers who were out there were very accommodating, no animal issues, you know, big dog, little dog issue. It was just very well-run. I just want to commend you and your staff for doing that. And then this afternoon, I was honored to attend the Cactus League Luncheon over at GCU University, and if that luncheon was reminiscent of what's going to happen this spring training, we have a lot of great things in store for us this season. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Leonie?
Yeah, thank you. I only got about 100 things to talk about. The Pine District Community Meeting, that we're going to have an event from 8:15 to 10:00 on Saturday, March 16th, 2019, at Altaloma High School, 9750 North 87th Avenue in Peoria. This is a Shretathon, so if you've got stuff you want to bring down and get rid of it, now's the time to do it, because it's important that the real estate people get all their stuff together and bring them on down. We'll be there waiting for you. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Youth Council Liaison Gilbert?
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to update you guys on our job fair. It's going to be Saturday, March 9th, and we're super excited to see who comes and to help in any way we can.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate you guys, all the work that the youth, all the youth are doing in the city of Peoria. And with that, we are adjourned.